Okay, folks, it's seven o'clock per the clock on the wall.
Yeah, boys.
I'd like to call the order. The June 4, 2024 Mound Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Roll call, please, Jim.
Councilmember McInnany? Commissioner Sessner, I couldn't think of the name, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sessner. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Chair Good?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Wacker?
Here.
And Commissioner Young?
Here.
All right, staff says we have no amendments to the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Motion to approve as distributed?
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion. Hearing now all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have minutes of the May 7, 2024 regular meeting of the Planning Commission. You had those distributed to you. I assume you've had an opportunity to look at them. Does anybody have any adjustments to those minutes? Hearing now, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 7, 2024 regular meeting.
Motion to approve minutes as distributed?
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second discussion. Hearing now all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have review and discussion of the 2024 Planning Commission work plan with five projects. Ms. Rita.
All right, good evening. It's exciting this year that we actually get to tackle these. Sometimes in the past, we haven't had time. So before you this evening are five topics. The plan was to focus on the first three, which are ones that we have spoken about a couple of times at the meetings with actual draft language for you to consider. And then the last two, I'll provide some type of, a little bit of an introduction to the topics, just to kind of prime our discussion that will come in the next couple of months. Staff does have some internal other additional code changes that we still expect, hopefully, that we can get to yet this year, but we'll see how the projects come in and the development applications. So while we had a full month or meeting that didn't have any topics, it felt like a good time to try and tackle as many as we could today. So if you go to page nine of your packet, the first topic is accessory dwelling units. We've talked about this topic a few times. This would be where the code changes would need to occur in order for it to occur. So definitions, just gonna try and move down, there we go. And I'll zoom out a little bit. So, awesome.
I was just about to do that.
So we have recommended that we include a definition that would be in our definition section. Then you can see two sets of.
That's better.
Even a little more would be just fine.
I don't think you know.
Oh, okay, then it's perfect.
Usually we hit the.
I meant to say it was perfect.
Turn that one off.
We usually do the big one.
Look at how cute you are.
One to the right. There you go.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Does that work? Otherwise, we should do the big button.
It's great.
All right. So first, there's a definition. Then there are two use tables. Our goal, my goal over the course of the next year is to get all of our uses into tables like this. Right now, we currently have the mixed use downtown and the C1 and I1s in this, in this format. We still need to work on the residential. As you can see, we're proposing that an accessory dwelling unit would be allowed in the R1, R1A, R2, and then in the mixed use districts. We did not include the R3 because that district is primarily intended to be townhouses or apartments, and I don't think that was our intention, that you would have an accessory dwelling unit for those types of structures. And again, these will be accessory uses, so you need to have some type of principal use already on the site before you could have an accessory dwelling unit. And then there would be in the accessory buildings section of the code, so 121, 129, 194, starting with section I, we'd include a new subsection that includes all of the standards related to accessory dwelling units. I'm not going to read and walk through all of those. They reflect our conversation. I did note, I did have a note for myself, and I apologize because I did not follow up directly with the building official, and I was going to do that. I reached out earlier and didn't get a chance to connect. The size, we were going to just ask them what the minimum size was for just a unit based on people, and I didn't have a chance to have that conversation, so I apologize. I do have wording in here that's based on a best practice. That's something we could certainly talk about. The wording, I can go down to it. It's different when I do a PDF instead of a PowerPoint. Relative to size, what I wrote was shall be no more than, oh, more, I worded it two different ways, no more than the greater of 800 square feet or the area of the primary dwelling footprint. It was a best practice I saw. We can certainly have a conversation about it. The reason for that is if you have a smaller house, say one that's under 800 square feet in size, you would still be able to have an accessory dwelling. So you weren't penalizing the smaller structures from having one, but you really don't want to have, if they have a more modern sized house, you don't really want to have another size structure the same size. So that's the reason for that. We can certainly look at whatever you would like. We don't have to have one, but I saw a variety of different approaches relative to size. And so I just wanted to call that out because it wasn't, this was just an example and it wasn't really language we landed on last time particularly. I think most of the other elements we had spoken about, so hopefully they're not a surprise. But I can certainly answer any questions about this. I think we'll just go topic by topic and see if you're comfortable, if you have questions, and then we can decide what to do next, depending on what questions you have and what I'm able to answer.
Just so I'm clear, Rita, you want to discuss the actual terms within the points here?
I would like to know, yes, because the next step for these is if you are all comfortable, then we would move forward with a public hearing and council consideration. If there's something that doesn't feel right, then either we need to talk about it and make adjustment to the language, or we need to come back with additional information.
Okay.
So whatever, wherever you land on this.
I do have a question. Rita, would there be any reason why we wouldn't match that 800 to 840, which is the, which is our smallest allowed single-family structure number that's in the zoning ordinance now, which I think it was good back to HUD?
Yeah, which many cities are working on getting rid of.
Right.
Yes, potentially. I'm trying to remember exactly the wording, that ceiling.
Yeah.
Because I think it has.
We could just make a noodle.
Size of the structure.
So I got a question regarding that, too.
Yeah.
Is that underscore feet footprint or underscore feet of the accessory dwelling? If they have a second story in it, is entered both?
So I specifically chose the word footprint intentionally. You may choose differently.
You didn't use the footprint on the top part. That's why I was asking.
It did not. So the first part, the greater of 800 square feet, is just total. You can have 800 square feet. Or if it, you, if you're going to have, if you have a bigger primary structure, say that you have a 2,000 square foot house, and there's 1,000 square feet on the first floor and 1,000 square feet on the second floor, we don't want a 2,000 square foot accessory dwelling unit. We want no more than 1,000 square, so I intentionally put footprint.
I like that.
For the second part. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So they're, they're two separate elements.
Okay.
The second one doesn't have footprint.
I was making sure that was intentional.
I just was worried because it's, it's like the wording is really particular, and so if that could be improved, let me know. But I was worried about having a, you know, a 2,400 square foot house with the basement, the first floor, the second floor, and we'd end up with a 2,400 square feet accessory dwelling, which I don't think is our intention, but if you don't care about it, we can take it out.
So I had one more question, too.
Yeah.
Under the number part, we set it to be a single-family dwelling, can only have one, but we don't set the number for mixed use?
In the mixed use, we allow single-family dwellings, so this would be, you can only have it with a single-family dwelling. So that might, I can clarify that. I understand what you're saying. The permitted is allowed in that district, but it's only allowed if you have a single-family dwelling in the mixed use district. So it's not allowed if you have an apartment or a townhouse or a duplex.
So it's essentially one per single-family dwelling?
In any district.
In any district.
Yeah, so maybe we add in any district.
If you have a house in the mixed use, you get one ADU. If you have a house in the R1, you get one ADU.
Yep, that's what I'm.
Yep. The concept works, and maybe I need to work on that wording so it's clear. That's where we have you, just to poke holes and ask questions.
So I wanted to just play out the comment.
Which one?
What Sarah said regarding the 840.
Yep, I'm actually trying to find that provision. Do you have it in the code? Did you already find it?
No, no, I was just kind of, I was trying to think through that, and I guess I want to make sure I understand this. So let's say that we had a 840 square foot principal structure, then we would say that the accessory structure could be equal to that.
Yes.
But not greater than?
But not greater than.
Correct.
Do these structures have a separate PID?
No.
Are they considered part of the square footage of the house?
No.
No. They'll, they would add into the total square footage of hardcover.
Yes.
And total square footage of accessory structures.
The assessor, now, that's just separate from us. The assessor would likely identify that parcel as having more than one residential structure on it, but from a zoning perspective, we would keep them as two separate elements. And there isn't a maximum or a minimum, maximum, a maximum size on a regular single-family dwelling, but we are proposing that for an accessory dwelling.
Okay.
With the intention of keeping things accessory.
So I wanted to finish my question.
Yep.
Though I hadn't got to my question yet.
Yes.
So if you had a non-conforming structure that was 800 square feet or something smaller than that, then you would not be allowed to put a accessory dwelling unit on that premises?
I would not agree with that. This is saying the maximum size you can have if you have smaller is 800, 800 square feet.
So does that mean if you have a 2,000 square foot primary dwelling and a, you could put a 2,000 square foot accessory dwelling in on there?
If it's, the footprint is 2,000 square feet, then yes.
Okay.
So if they had a 700 square foot house, they could put an 800 square foot accessory dwelling on it?
Right, because there was the question of whether you should really, whether you should be penalizing if someone had a, and maybe you think we should, but that was kind of the conversation of the precedence that I was reviewing, is that, you know, should a person with a smaller house, if they have the space otherwise on the lot, to put a reasonably sized structure, should they not be allowed? They're limited, so if they have a 500 square foot house, they can only put a 500, but if you have a 2,000 square foot house, then you get to put 1,000. So this was a way of, a little bit of equalizing it, but you may not want that. That's why I wanted to call out that provision.
That's actually where I was headed, is exactly what Commissioner Baker was saying, is if you have a non-conforming structure and you make an accessory dwelling unit that is maybe kind of now the principal structure, is that what we're looking for? That, I'm trying to think of how this could be abused, having been on the commission for a while and.
Yes.
But it, but it still can't be taller than the principal structure, so you're limiting that?
Correct. Because it's inaccessible, it is inaccessible. It either has to be within that structure, or it has, if it's an inaccessible building, it cannot be taller than the principal structure, because that's how the code currently reads. I found the other thing. 840 square feet per dwelling. I knew you knew it, but I haven't, that one always finds, feels like it's hidden.
Yeah, it's not in a really good spot, I know.
No.
I think I'm just stuck on it maybe being able to be less of an accessory.
It is less of an accessory if you have a small house. I totally agree with you, and if that's not what you want, then we should change the wording.
I think I'm, I'm a little stuck on that. I don't know how everyone knows.
I don't know how, I wonder how many.
How many we have?
Small houses we actually have.
Yeah. I, it felt like 800 wasn't.
Yeah.
If your 840 is the minimum, you would only really be talking about the non-conforming ones.
Yeah.
Exactly. Do we want to allow non-conformities to sort of become bigger non-conformities, I guess, is.
Maybe. I mean, in Mound, those, those ones probably have been here for a really long time.
And I look at it, in my opinion, that the accessory dwelling unit is conforming.
A big enough lot to sustain it.
You're not exacerbating or making the existing non-conforming condition of the house increased. You're creating a conforming ADU. And again.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But you're taking some, that's an oddity, and making it more of an oddity, that, that's my concern.
That unfortunately is not something that we can weigh strongly and tell you the right or the wrong. This is, this is one of those legislative things that.
I'm interested if there's other opinions up here as well, but that, that's, that stuck out to me.
Then what was the reason for, is that the whole reason for having the no more than greater than 800 or the area of the primary dwelling footprint?
Mm-hmm, was to just allow for the smaller houses to still have something, because maybe you have an 800 square foot house, say that you even have a 1,000 square foot house. If you do just primary footprint and they only have 500 square feet as their footprint, then they're stuck. So it's, it's, you know, they only can do 500 if we use footprint, but if we use the whole area, then we can end up with a 2,000 square foot house doing 2,000. So it's trying to figure out how to handle the wide range of housing sizes that we have and not making something too big. I mean, there are other elements that we did talk about last time. You can do no more than 50%, you know, of the area, all those things happen. So maybe the underlying conversation is how big do you want these to be? Are you concerned about them being too big in size? Do we want to just set a number? Do we want to set the footprint? And you can duplicate the footprint, even if it's two stories, you could duplicate the footprint?
What do you normally see out there in other environments?
This was one of those ones that really varies. Many cities, it, it, there isn't a clear answer, which is why I didn't give you a clear answer. I think last time I gave you three options. We have seen a minimum and maximum size, 400 square feet to 1,000 square feet done. We've seen 50% of the footprint, and that allows, the reason for the 50% is if you have a ranch-style house that has a basement, then you can get the ADU in the basement if you wanted to, because you're 50% of the footprint, or 50% of the second story. Those are the two most common ones.
So just to finish my thought on all of this, I think in looking at some other cases we've gone through where we've, we've then wondered why, you know, why, why can't we, or why do we have things grandfathered in or whatever, I would be in favor of writing it a bit tighter than maybe we think we want and kind of capping the ends of maybe the biggest and the smallest homes, and then it's easy to back off on that later. If a lot of variance requests come through and we consider them and they all seem reasonable, it's harder to tighten it up, because then the reason that you wanted to tighten it up is effectively grandfathered in.
And I get that. The only caution I would have is you can grant variances, but you have to have the findings, and so we have to be careful about whether or not, if you, if we set a maximum of 2,000 or whatever, 1,000 square feet, can we have enough to justify a finding if someone wants to have it 1,200 square feet? That's my only concern. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have a number, it's just, we have to be careful about the number, because I think justifying a variance will be tough in terms of the findings. Like what is really the practical difficulties? You just want 1,200 square feet instead of 1,000. I think it'll be harder to justify. But I think it's certainly not, we can't obsess over that number because we're really not going to know until we get going, which is kind of what you're saying, is we have to pick something, pick something, err a little bit on the conservative, knowing we might have to make adjustments.
And I think the hardcover is going to come into play, too, specifically on a lot of these smaller lots that when people want to put additions on. We, we do see them changing out driveways, sidewalks, taking out patios to accommodate that. And, and again, we do have some larger lots, but even they are pushing on a lot of the redevelopment projects to the upper limit of their hardcover allowance.
So are we, to kind of get to this number, because I think, for, for example, the 50% of the footprint kind of accounts for a basement or a second story of the home. You know, I don't know if we want, if, I don't feel like in Mound, there's that many houses that are huge sprawling ranch-style houses, so we probably are pretty tight with that number, if that's what people would be comfortable with. If we deal with a smaller house, I don't know if we care if we're limiting really what they can do if they have a smaller house. It's kind of treating everybody similarly, it's just if you have a small house, then you definitely are limited on how much you can do if we're just dealing with footprint.
Okay, do we have suggested changes for Rita? I think you've gotten some suggested wording changes earlier, correct?
These are, everything that we have is encountered in here, so incorporated, everything we just discussed, or was discussed before. So we're at the point of, we either need to make changes or we need to come back with information if that's helpful. And obviously, I have the, in any zoning district for the number to kind of clarify Mr. Baker's question. Does someone have a passionate, it feels like there isn't a lot of passionate knowledge about which way we should go. There's a lot of openness, so does, do we want to just try the 50% since it doesn't seem like there's a passion for one way or the other?
Or do we want to bring it back with some examples, maybe?
What would the 50% read as, then?
I mean, we could, I just.
How would that read, then, Rita?
Uh, the ADU shall be no more than 50% of the primary dwelling footprint, or the area of the ADU shall be no more than 50% of the primary dwelling footprint. So if you have a 2,000 square foot house, you can have a 1,000 square foot ADU. It can be inside or attached, assuming all the other things work.
But if you have a 2,000 square foot house that's got 1,000 square foot footprint, the ADU could only be 500 square feet.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think we should use either the footprint as written or a 50%.
Which is 10 by 50 of 500 square foot, that's all.
Yeah.
Especially if it's on two stories.
Or you can just do 100% of the footprint. Which doesn't, then it doesn't matter if it's two stories, one story basement, basement one.
And where are we coming into, is it a duplex, then, if it's 100%?
Well, I was saying it's, can't be more than the footprint of the home.
But a duplex isn't a single-family dwelling, though, is it?
I, this is one of those kind of interesting caveats. It, it can be similar of, duplexes are similar in size. Generally duplexes, there's different ones. Up and downs would have two separate entrances, they're classified different in the building code, but these are very similar.
But we say a lot with a single-family dwelling can have one ADU.
I think Commissioner Young's question is, at what point does it go from being an ADU to being a duplex? That's how I would interpret that question.
Oh, I misunderstood.
You're talking about an ADU for each side of the duplex?
No, no.
No, the question is, if you allow an ADU to be of a certain size, at what point do you tip over and it's really a duplex versus a single-family home?
That's where I was going with the small home, too.
And honestly, that's a conversation that is part of all of this conversation, is a fine line. But there, the difference is that a duplex usually doesn't have these kind of restrictions on them. They might have independent sewer and water, they have additional parking, they're considered two separate units, so everything applies doubly, whereas these have some provisions that try and keep them smaller.
So in regards to that.
Yep.
I had a question, because 10 says the ADU shall have separate utility connections, which to movement, it has to have separate sewer, water, electric, which then almost leads you to believe it's a duplex.
And that was something that each city has to determine. I think Sarah was having conversations internally.
Yeah, we're not sure how Public Works wants to do that yet. It's written that they, that they would have separate, but it's possible that Public Works in engineering, because it's going to stay on the same parcel and they're going to be paid by the same person, that it will not have separate. So that's still a little bit.
And if it's within a principal dwelling, why would you have separate?
Each city, engineering and Public Works decides.
They're a little different, yeah.
Yeah, they, that is one of those areas that they always weigh in at the end and direct us on which way to go.
To me, I would almost say that they can't have separate utility connections.
Yep.
Because then it forces the owner to be responsible for both, right?
Correct. It does help with the owner responsibility if they don't have those separate ones, but some cities have provisions based on how they do their billing that wants those two things to be separate.
Okay, does anybody have any substantive changes to this, to recommend, to Rita?
So I didn't sense any strong opinions about my initial point, so I can kind of drop that. I had one kind of nitpicky thing that's like in the first sentence. I just wonder if we want to adjust the wording here. It says full bathroom facilities.
Yeah.
Do we, so if somebody puts a half bath in, is it not an ADU?
Correct.
Is that really what we want?
Well, you need to have a shower.
Shower's not a full bath.
Yeah, that's my point.
Shower's a three-quarter.
It's, it's, it's a wording thing that somebody could kind of work around, and I just thought maybe we want to clear that up, so it's not a question later.
Good point.
Okay. I'd catch.
Okay, any other suggested changes?
I don't know. Do we want them?
What?
What's that?
Well, I know we want to have, we want to have a shower or a tub. I just was debating whether a shower is sufficient or not. That's all.
I think if it's a small space, you might have to have a shower. I mean, I can't even imagine putting a big tub in a small square footage ADU.
I'm looking for how it can be gamed. It's not an ADU, I only have a half bath. I'm exempt from all of these other requirements.
Oh, you're doing the opposite.
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting. Huh. Well, if it, it, I think the interpretation that Steph has is pretty strict, but yes.
But if they put a half bath, it won't be considered an ADU by this definition?
But then it also wouldn't be allowed to have a half bath.
It wouldn't be allowed, because you have to have a full bathroom.
You wouldn't be allowed to have that in there.
Yeah.
Because we actually do have people that propose those things, and we say you can't do it unless you meet. So if people start having full kitchens, full bathrooms, making it look like a unit, we say that's not allowed currently in the code, because it's not.
Assess, the way that it, that we see it is if it comes in and, you know, we see a full bathroom and a kitchen and a living room and a bedroom, that's being, that's not accessory space in the accessory structure. That's looking like, not to say that they couldn't if we, if we go to the ADU route, but what we've allowed historically is hobby space, workspace, you know, a lot of folks today, you know, spend a lot of time in their accessory structures, and having a stool and a sink is reasonable for cleaning up, but there's no reason to have, you know, a guest quarters and a, and a cooking facilities and all those types of things. So that's kind of where we, it either needs to be accessory space or it needs to be habitable space.
But I like that conversation, because I think going into it, we should clarify with the building official on how they're going to evaluate so that they're working together.
Any ambiguity in it, just cost the city money?
It's a good point.
Yep.
Administrative costs.
Yep.
So I am still of the opinion that we should change number 10, the utility connection?
We'll, we'll note it and.
Or you can just change it, make the recommendation and.
I would make the recommendation that it shall have the same utility connections as the primary structure.
Yep.
It's a good point.
And what did we want to do with number three?
I think we're going to leave it the way it is, I think, just.
The no more than greater than 840 square feet or the primary footprint, or do you want to change that?
I'm good with it. I can, I can drop my point.
Anybody else have an opinion on that?
All right. At the very least, we'll change it to 840, but we'll keep looking at it to see, maybe give some examples, work on that. So with that, is there a comfort level with moving forward with the public hearing, city council consideration, or do you want to see this again?
I'm, I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing a big demand.
Okay.
See it again, so, that said, you do have some minor language changes, correct?
Yes, could you make a motion that says move this forward with the changes we discussed this evening?
So I'll make a motion to approve the accessory dwelling unit code changes as written, except for number ten, utility connection. The ADU shall have the same utility connections as the primary dwelling unit.
And some other minor language changes.
What was, oh, the, another minor link around the bathroom.
I have bathroom number, so in any district, a lot with a single family district, to make sure that it's clear that in mixed use, it's only a single family. Um, and then eight forty at least for number three, but I reserve, you can put that in there. Noting I reserve the right to change that if we keep working on it and we find something better.
And the utilities.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, do you have enough for a motion?
I think so, are you good?
Yes, Sarah, we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, discussion further. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Most opposed nay. Motion carries.
All right, next topic, what is my next, oh, so, sorry, I'm trying to find my mouse. It's not coming, oh, there it is. Okay. Solar energy systems. When we last had this conversation, the conversation was that we would really be focused on solar energy systems related to roof mounted. Um, we also have included building integrated solar, which I'll go into in a second. But basically, the idea of something that's really not noticeable, it's not on the ground, it's not sitting on the ground. Um, so, that's what's proposed in front of you. We have definition, we have four definitions provided. Um, building integrated solar system, just because we didn't quite talk about that, I just wanted to make sure. So that's the idea that you might have actual building materials that have solar properties in them, so shingles or roof or something, not a panel, but the materials themselves have it in there. Um, again, so that would be something you wouldn't really see. Um, then a ground mounted is the, the ones that actually on a rack or a pole that rests to the ground, and we're actually not allowing those, but it's helpful to have a definition of what those are, so that we can be clear that we don't allow those. Roof mounted, so something that's on a rack on top of a roof, and then just solar access in general. Um, as you move to the use table, you can see in the accessory use, uh, uses, we allow solar energy systems in all of the districts that we have. And then in a new section, one twenty-nine nine oh six, um, we will be looking at putting in some very specific provisions.
Can I ask a question before you keep going?
For sure.
Is there a reason we don't just specifically call out solar energy systems ground mounted as not permitted?
Yes, because in our use table, we only have the terms permitted, conditional. We don't actually say not permitted. Um, it also gets a little bit tricky, because then if something is kind of sort of similar to something, it gets confusing. Um, but I did specifically talk about that in one twenty-nine nine oh six A, to try and make sure that it was clear, um, that no ground mounted solar energy systems or solar parking lots shade structures are allowed. I added it there, so it wasn't not in the code, it just, I didn't really feel comfortable putting it in the use table, because we don't have other uses in the use table that are not permitted. Um, if something's not permitted anyplace in the city, it's just not listed in the code itself. And that's how most use tables are prepared in cities, is that we don't list what's not allowed, because then if you're not on the list and you're not, if you're not allowed and you're not on the not permitted list, then there's room for someone to say that they should be allowed, because you didn't put them on the, on the prohibited list. Does that make sense? I feel like I'm doing a lot of double negatives, so if that's confusing, I don't know.
So I'm just wondering, because there's one thing that's not on here is if it's attached to like the building, but not the roof.
Like the side of it?
Like the side of the house, which I've actually seen.
Yeah. So what do we think about that? Is that, the one that you've seen, is that something that we would want here? So we would.
Yeah.
So we have.
Yeah, I was somewhere recently and saw it on the side of the house, too.
I saw it on Highway twelve when I was driving west. The big huge solar panels are mounted like directly on the south side of their house.
Okay, so I can add a statement that says in that same section, that solar energy systems cannot be attached directly to the wall of a structure. Does that cover it?
Thank you, yeah.
What about solar?
It's got to be on the roof.
Yes.
Yeah. Solar dock systems?
Solar what?
Docks. You know, solar systems on boat docks.
Is that a thing?
Yeah, so we have solar panels that charge the battery for electricity.
Oh, for the boats?
For the boats.
Oh.
I have.
I have one.
I guess, I feel like that's different, but I understand what you're saying.
It's.
It's on the dock, it actually charges the battery.
Yeah.
Isn't it in the water?
No, it's above the.
Just like a little square.
One seashore, about like that.
It's about that.
Okay.
Solar mounted to docks, or mounted to a little, the box.
Correct. Well, I mean, it's the same thing as if I have a little solar light and I have a little panel on top of my little solar light, right? I mean, it's kind of the same idea. Or light poles that have solar to capture the light. Do we have a concern about that?
Well. We got, we got a couple people who have them, so. It's a real efficient way to keep your boat.
I mean, it's an unregulated.
Power line.
Yep.
Non-regulated issue, I mean, you know, it's like, it's like having a, a lift on your dock. You don't regulate that.
Yeah, I, what I struggle with is just the idea, the difference in like what it's powering, you know.
Right, is there anything in here that defines that the solar energy is for the house?
Right, that's what I'm, yeah.
There, is there anything?
Buildings, buildings, is a dock a building?
Why do we care where the electricity goes, as long as the thing is on the roof?
But to her comment, you know, you have the solar light pass. Solar lights in there, your pathway.
I mean, we can write an exception in here that those don't, aren't qualified under this.
I'm just saying, this is, this is specifically around solar that's going into the house.
Right, it's into the main panel of your electricity system, or if you have extra, you're returning it back to the grid. I agree with you, it's just, there is that confusion if those other things exist. And I wasn't aware, I live on a lake, I was not aware of the connection between the lifts and solar.
Why in removal, number two?
Yes.
It said solar energy systems must be removed and properly disposed of if they are out of production for more than one year. Now, does that mean if I've bought a unit that goes on my roof that's conforming, and a year from now, that company goes out of business and are not manufacturing those anymore, I have to take mine down?
No, and that word obviously needs to be changed.
That needs to get fixed.
Yep, we can do that. Um, if they are out of use, so that means if you put it on there and you're not actively using it, or the building goes for sale, yeah. So it's like the idea of energy production, if it's no longer using to do energy production.
Yep.
But I understand what you were saying is the other example, so we need to fix that.
Do you want to put a time limit on that, within six months it has to be removed? Within ninety days, within nine months?
That's a good point.
Um, because things say, well, I'll, I'll remove it, I'm getting to it, yeah, I'll get to it. Oh, I'm on vacation, I'll get to it.
I understand what you mean. I was just reading, trying to figure out where I'd put it, because that sentence is.
Maybe like six months or something?
Yeah, yeah, it's just that sentence is getting long.
That, that's a, that's a commonly used thing for things in building code.
Yep, I will just probably put a second sentence.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, these are all, this is why you're here.
It's really good.
Yeah. It's hard enough to get to the first draft, it's good to have people look at it.
Right, you have to have it, take it on.
Other elements? Concerns? I can summarize what I heard.
Put some, some exception language in there, maybe. You can add something, maybe an E, exceptions to this shall not, this shall, shall not cover.
Yeah, I think so.
All encompassing type thing.
Yep. So summary of what I heard.
Okay, what'd you hear?
I heard not allowed to be attached on a wall of a structure, that's part of A. Part of removal, changing the word production, so not in use, and the timeframe is it has to be removed within six months. And then we need some type of exceptions that identifies like a solar dock lift or solar related to lights, those kind of smaller scales, solar uses.
Spalish scale units.
Flag poles, the red flags.
That are really used for energy production, or building energy production, that's the kind of ones.
What I've seen, the word you use is portable.
Yeah.
That's what I've seen, the other, so I don't know if that works. Or is there a definition you can do for solar energy system that's converting it by an inverter to one ten?
Yep.
To AC.
Yep, that I will have to look at.
You can't have it overnight.
All right, you've heard all of the changes that Rita just reiterated. Anybody have any other changes they'd like to suggest? Okay, then are we comfortable with a motion?
I'd say yeah.
Um, to recommend approval with the changes that have been identified by Rita?
So motion to approve the proposed code changes for solar energy system as written and include the changes from Rita.
Those who have enough, we have a second.
Second?
We have a second, we have further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed nay. Motion carries, let's move on to electric vehicle chargers.
All right, electric vehicle chargers. You would think this would be simple, not complicated fast, isn't it?
If you look in your rearview mirror, the car behind you is a Tesla. Trust me.
Wow.
I do feel like that these days. Uh, so, we have added a number of different definitions. Um, charging levels, what an electric vehicle is, electric vehicle charging stations, electric vehicle service equipment. I was trying to get rid of some of them, but it felt like we needed to, it's a little, hopefully it's not as confusing if you, we'll keep talking about it. But we are showing it allowed in any of the districts. Um, we do have separate provisions between, um, single family and two family and twin home residents versus townhomes. And the reason for that is generally, single family, two family residents are, you would normally have that in your garage, it's kind of a personal type of preference. So we wanted to have standards different between those two bodies, because you're, you're typically not talking about that relative to parking space. So the first one is just saying, um, that they should have it in a garage, on the exterior wall of the home or garage, or on a freestanding pole. Um, and that's it, we don't have additional standards for those types of uses. And then if we have, uh, any electric vehicle supply equipment serving residential structures with three or more units or non-residential, then we have additional standards. So I, these should be what we talked about before, the idea that they're ADA, meeting ADA requirements, um, that they're not trying, that they're not trying to, that they won't trip pedestrians or impede travel on sidewalks. Trying to not encroach on the dimensions of the parking space, so we have a minimum size, and we don't want these to be placed such that you don't have the minimum size anymore and are causing the vehicle to hang out anymore. Um, designed to minimize damage by accidents. Signage, I was debating this one, whether it should be posted to indicate that it's only for electric vehicle charging or not. I, I definitely debated, I took it out, then I put it back in, so.
That's what I normally see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I normally see it, but if you don't require a minimum, that's kind of feels like it could be up to the discretion of the person to want to sign it. Um, but I left it in, because I thought we wanted to say that you could sign it, and that's an easy way of doing it.
Well, the person driving the electric vehicle who pulls up and finds a non-electric vehicle in that parking spot is not going to be a happy camper.
Very true. Um, sight lighting. We say that it should be provided, if it's for daytime purposes only, you, we could, that, I've seen that in different ways. And then just the idea that you have to keep it maintained. Um, there are many, many other standards, I was trying to simplify it down as a starting point for us, if you have certain ideas or things that you think are missing. Certainly, there are other examples in cities that actually require these, have many more standards, but I believe, my understanding was, we were just going to make it clear that you could have them, but we're not requiring them to occur at this stage. We, I kind of put that on the side where we studied it a little bit more and come back, but we wanted to get some language in the code right now. So happy if there's things I should clarify, um, or if I can make this simpler in some way. It's always a little confusing between electric vehicle supply equipment and the actual spaces. Are a little interesting, um, but happy to make it better.
I'm having difficulty thinking about a station that is only for daylight. Does that mean you can't use it if it's nighttime?
It could be, if you had the kind of commercial, if you had more of a commercial station and you didn't want people parking in your lot at night and using it. I'm, we can just do.
Like a supermarket or something like that?
We can just do sight lighting as required. I think this provides someone.
That's what I'd say, sight lighting is required.
That's what?
Yeah.
Yep.
Crossed out. Other thoughts?
So, I had a question, what's, why are we having the definition of electric vehicle charging station in here?
We are using it in two and three.
Two and three?
Yeah, B, two and three.
Oh.
It is a little weird, because I was trying to decide sometimes if I should use station or equipment, but equipment is really the installation part, and the station is the parking space that has the charger, so that's why I have both. But if I can get rid of it, I mean.
And just calling it in the table, electrical ve, electric vehicle charging, takes both of them into effect?
Well, because you're then going to the section two oh seven where it says electric vehicle charging. But if you think that's unclear, I certainly can change it. I could put electric vehicle. I, I think one of the reasons I was hesitating on calling it a station is when you're putting it in your single family home, it's probably, people don't feel like it probably is a station anymore. So that's, I think, where I was having the issue using that word as the terminology. But again.
I think you could use station, I, I don't think there's going to be a problem.
Okay, I can do that.
That's not.
Or you could do station and equipment.
I mean, even, even one in your garage could be considered a station.
Type and equipment.
Whatever is clear to the general public is great.
So then I have, I guess I have a question then, is?
Yeah.
The station mean a single space? A single public or private parking space? So that, do you have to have a si, signage for each station? Each, each public, each spot?
Yes, or a state, or a sign in between them that shows the two arrows down. But you have to show something that you know that those electric vehicles.
I think I'm seeing a sign on each.
I've seen a sign on each, yeah.
Most of the time, that's what I've seen, but I don't think I'd be opposed if you had a sign between the two spaces and pointed.
Or like the one with the two arrows.
Good.
Other suggestions from Rita? Okay, we have some changes that have been suggested.
I have electric vehicle charging station as the use, and getting rid of the lighting charging for daytime purposes only, that's the only two I wrote down.
So I guess I have one more.
Sure.
Since we just talked about removal of solar equipment.
Yes.
If the charging station's no longer operational, do you want to put removal by a certain time limit there?
Sure, do we want similar language?
I think so.
Yep, I'll bring over.
This is same language.
Similar language.
Make it, maybe make a five.
Yep.
Do we know if an inspect is developing or adhering to some kind of code around the installation of these things as well? Just wondering, do we need to reference them as like the governing body over installation methods or?
I don't think so, because they, they are the govern, either them or the fire are always the governing body over pretty much everything that happens in this city that is building related. Do you think so?
What's that?
Installation of electric vehicle charging stations, you would talk to the chief and or min inspect when it comes up to make sure that, that they adhere to the electrical code and the building code and the fire code.
For, um.
Charging station installation.
That's where I think it would start, yeah.
So I don't think we need to, because we don't in other places of the code, like we don't reference that, because that's inherent. I do know that, uh, there is discussion in fire department circles about them being installed inside of buildings. Um, that's where the fire chief might get involved, but it's just, uh, it's not related to zoning, like it's.
Installed in a building, do you mean like in a garage? Like if it was.
Yeah, there's some.
Apartment building with a lower underground parking and they put it in.
There's some concern by some fire departments in cities that I'm working with about those, just not, making sure that they're installed correctly, because there is a concern that if a electric vehicle catches fire, they're a lot harder to go out. They take hours and hours to go out instead of.
So the risk to the property upstairs?
Yeah. But they haven't, they're not banning it, they're just being more careful with it.
We should, just as a, maybe as a, before we get to thing, is ha, is have it looked by the electrical inspector, min inspect and the fire chief.
Yep.
Okay, we've had some suggestions from Rita, she has written them down. Chairman entertain a motion to approve the, uh, electric vehicle charging station.
I'm wishing to approve the, uh, electrical vehicle charging station requirements as written with the notes discussed and, and recorded by Rita.
Second.
We have motion and second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed nay. Motion carries.
All right, also in this topic are some introductions for other topics. Um, I know that when we met in the joint meeting, there was discussion about other topics that we may want to cover. We probably will take a pause on those while we deal with the two topics that we're going to talk about tonight as an introduction. Um, the reason that we decided to do the introduction is that we know that these are coming forward, um, and we wanted to at least give you a, a rounding before you see them. Um, one of them, the cannabis, is going to actually move, um, at a faster pace than we normally have because of, because of things that happen in the legislature this year. Um, and then the signage one, we've actually been working on on and off, but it, there's become, just given the development that's happening, it would be nice if that one was put into place. Um, and so that was really a staff-led item that we wanted to tackle, um, but, uh, that will be something that we will meet with you about. So as I said, I'm going to just cover the two as an introduction and then I'll kind of talk through how we're going to step through the process. So cannabis, that one is really related to state legislation. In two, in 2023, the Minnesota Legislature approved expanded legalization of THC cannabis products and cannabis businesses, which includes hemp. They established a new office of cannabis management, generally called OCM. There was new licensing and zoning requirements and sales were expected to begin in 2025. This is something that staff has been monitoring, but because of the nature of the city, we haven't had to do a lot with it yet and we were planning on doing stuff in the summer and fall. However, in the 2024 legislature, they actually changed the rule at the last, well, to us it felt like at the last minute, but. They changed the rule and so actually there are cannabis businesses, social equity ones that can actually apply for a licensure in July with availability in August, which moves up the timeframe. And so now we feel like we need to have rules in place so that we have rules that say where they can go in the city and how registration is. So originally, we were planning on tackling this in the spring or summer to fall. Now we're having to move up our timeframe and we want to have it done in July, which is why we wanted to introduce it tonight with the knowledge that we won't be doing kind of our normal, here's the information, what do you think? Here's the rule, you know, what do you think? Go to the council, it'll be, we're going to come back to you in July. Here's what the city attorney wrote, we're hoping that you will recommend its adoption and the council will see it in July, so it's in place before those new licenses are going to become available. So, starting in August, Minnesota residents over 21 can use cannabis flower and products on their private property and at events licensed specifically for onsite consumption. And they can have up to eight cannabis plants inside their residences.
Without a permit?
This is not related to the permitting, the permitting is related primarily to the actual businesses. And there are different levels of this, so the kind of this is foundational, some elements are going to be really taking, all of this is going to be overseen by the city attorney. Obviously, Sarah and I will provide insights onto the districts and locations from a zoning perspective. Some things you will see, some things will go directly to the city council, some things you can't regulate, some things you can. So obviously, we will provide you information on the things you can regulate, some things are just state law. These are all the different types of businesses that potentially can be regulated. I don't, I just show you so that you're not surprised next month if we have a definition for every single one of those businesses because we're going to have to make sure our code covers all the different types of businesses that could have, could occur in the city. And this isn't meant to scare you, this is something that's been going around, city's been talking about. It's just a matter of we need to actually put some information together. As it develops community, I think things are a little bit different than in other communities, meaning we don't have agricultural fields that we're worried about cannabis production. We don't have large industrial areas where people might buy big industrial businesses to put in, like we're in a different spot, but we still need to have regulations. So it isn't something that we're overly concerned about, but we do want to have things in place before the newest folks can have licensure. We cannot do a de facto ban on cannabis or hemp businesses and there are differences in the legislation between cannabis and hemp and what you can do. We can have reasonable regulations on time, place, manner of retail sales, manufacturing, cultivation. Standards that we can look at are things like zoning districts, setbacks, buffers, signage, odors, hours of operation. So from a zoning perspective, a lot of those things we would cover. There's also the ability to do registration and licensure and that's something that the city council will handle. So that's going to be, you know, we provide you information, but that's really not where the city, where the planning commission weighs in. The planning commission weighs in on zoning districts and where things should be allowed. So we can require setbacks up to 1,000 feet from schools, up to 500 feet from daycares, playgrounds, athletic fields. There's hours of operation that the city can impose. They can be, you can see from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. 10 p.m., 10 a.m. on Sundays. We can actually do regulations that limit to 9 p.m. every day of the week, though they could go till 2 a.m. on Saturdays and Sundays according to state law. So there's a little bit of flexibility, not a lot of flexibility to how we can move forward. Currently, we can license edible cannabinoid project, products, but then that'll transfer once OCM actually is up and going. And this is where, this is more just information for you, but really this is something the city council will deal with. Cities have to allow one business per 12,500 residents. However, there's some discussion about how it works with countywide and whatever is allowed countywide can impact the city amount. This is where the city attorney is the expert on how that all works and will be the one that kind of leads that part of it. And as I said, social equity applicants can begin cultivation, early cultivation this summer, so we're planning on having the rules created in July so that they can be adopted by the city council and we can have that in place. Originally, we were figuring we would do it the end of the year and they'd be ready by January 1st. And part of the reason for that is that the legislature directed the office of cannabis management to create a model ordinance that cities could use. It's not created yet, it's in process, there's a meeting I know tomorrow with a bunch of planners to look at it and we know the city attorney's been involved with it as well. So we have things we can work off of, we were just kind of waiting for those things to be in place before we worked with you because that makes a lot of sense for. Some cities are much more ahead of the curve because they have more potential than we do. Other things.
Well, what is social equity?
Thank you, I was going to ask, I feel like I'm at a disconnect, so thank you for asking, because I was going to ask that too, I'm just trying to figure it out.
These are people who were convicted, right?
I believe they were people that were previously convicted and then they would be, because they, in order to kind of equalize that, they are allowed to have early application for it.
What?
It, I.
I still don't know if I'm tracking this, but.
Convicted, so I get early.
Because we've changed the rules and we now are allowing.
Get early applications.
To, to grow and.
Cultivate?
Yeah.
It's just growing, right, cultivating is just growing. Have we heard any chatter amongst the city that we know that there's someone who would be thinking about and planning to do this? Or is it just the, the push because this change happened.
I'm just curious.
Recently, and now we're just trying to accommodate it?
So we were always planning on accommodating it, it's just the timeline. Timeline move forward because we don't want to have something that's available before we have information about where it should go.
I guess I'm just curious to know, has the city had anyone?
I think that, I would say, Sarah can correct me, like there's inquiries, but it seemed like the kind of inquiries that they're sending to everybody to kind of see where different cities are at.
Where the best place would be to get into that.
That's my impression, but I don't think we have more information about the inquiries that we've received.
Okay, and in your document, you have the city attorney will be preparing zoning code changes for us to consider, is that correct?
That is correct, at the July meeting, there will be specific zoning code changes which Sarah and I will work with. And this is one of those cases similar to other types of uses where the city attorney's direction is probably something that staff will be highly weighing on because of the fact that this is a legislative act from the state and there's a lot of rules and you don't want to be in violation of those rules. So obviously, we'll answer questions, we can provide it, but this isn't one where there's a lot of discretion, especially given how our city is organized and we can't prohibit it totally. So like we can't have 1,000 feet from every school, playground, every place there's youth because there would be no place left. And so we're going to have to consciously think of that kind of element.
So, but I was confused because it said, if a city has 12,500, you must have at least one.
One.
But we're not that big, so we don't have to.
You have to allow.
You have to have one, that's how I read it, we would have to have one, if you're under that population, you would still have to have one.
Yes.
Okay.
But you don't have to have more, you can allow more.
Okay.
But depending on how the, it works with the county, so there's county provisions and city provisions and. But at the very minimum, it says you have to allow one. And there is also, this does talk about, I kind of skipped over it, is that if you have, decide to operate a municipal, like at the liquor store that they sell cannabis, then that can factor into things as well. But again, that's licensing and registration, which is separate than zoning. So what you'll be asked to do is where should this be allowed, are there other, are there specific zoning standards we want to do because of this? Is this?
And the list of businesses.
Yep. And so there'll be a list of businesses, each business has a definition, I didn't give them to you because it's, you know, you'll see it, but it's, the whole is, every, every business has a definition of what it is. There's a use table similar to what you've been seeing, that's all those businesses, here's where we might allow them. Then we'll have a section that says, here are the standards in terms of having and operating one of those. There might be hours of operation, there might be something about location, there might be setbacks, those types of things. So if you have concerns, it would be good to hear them so we can communicate those to the city attorney, so I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't have a conversation. Whatever the concerns are, it'd be great to talk about them and convey them to them and then we would know, is that something we can really do about or not? Because there will be some limits. You know, this, from a planner's perspective, this is similar to adult use. Telecommunications, these are topics that federal or state have made decisions about and the cities have parameters under which to work. To us, this is similar to that, where there's all these legislations and we just try and figure out the best course forward, given what another body has decided you can and cannot regulate.
Well, and I think, well, one, thank you, I appreciate the introduction because I feel like I am behind the curve and I'm going to have to do a little bit, we have to do a little bit of homework before July to kind of understand some of this. But I also, I mean, I do, I appreciate you giving us the introduction because I think there's some stuff that I'd like to just review and research myself, but I think the whole topic is kind of the wild, wild west right now, so. I mean, obviously, something like this, I think is good that the city attorney is going to kind of take the charge on that and, 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 yeah, I, I think it's an interesting topic.
Yes, and I know there's been discussion, I mean, who knows, it's new for Minnesota and know that there's planners in my firm.
Floodgates are open and everyone's trying to restructure.
You know, and, and had conversations and in some places, it depends on the regulations, it hasn't, like I think there's a lot of concern, but some of those concerns haven't played out. It's the unknowns that are really tough for folks, but.
And I still think it's kind of a taboo topic, I think there's a lot of people in the communities that probably, you know, like I said, I have to do my own homework to figure it out so that I don't have those personal biases. When it does come to us and we say, you know, how does this look from a land use perspective? Is it good for our community, does it meet the comp plan? You know, I think there's a lot of things that we'll be charged with looking at and reviewing that, that again, I think it's a topic that's a.
Been illegal for.
Little taboo, you know, you just don't, nobody knows how they feel about it, you know?
Correct.
And I think it's, it could be twofold, it could be a great opportunity to bring more business here, a business owner.
Right, and I know one of my planners that works in my office has, has been working with a city that's in Michigan and the problem is I don't know what their rules are versus us, right? Would you think about Oregon or California, I mean, everybody has different rules, so who knows? He was saying that they're, they have had this for a while and they've actually, for them, it's worked out okay. They've had more businesses and they're a tourist destination, so it became, I'm not saying that that's what you want. So every city is going to have a different impact from it.
Jump off your bike. High stuff.
Get a new senior's facility.
Right, glaucoma, like let's fix it.
Yes.
No, and I'm not against it, I think it's good.
The information you put up here, I don't see it in the packet.
I didn't because we were putting together his background info, Sarah can.
It literally came up, came the day that, the day we were putting packet together.
Can we access this?
We can provide.
Well, we'll send it to you. Oh, that'd be great, thank you.
And if there's anything else, I mean, there might be some leak stuff that we can.
That, I have, yeah, I have some leak stuff that, there's different things.
Did you say leaked stuff?
League.
League of Minnesota Cities is usually.
Leaked, well, someone leaked it from the state, who do we get?
League of Minnesota Cities is a really good resource for most things related to planning and zoning and so when in default, it's a good thing to type in League of Minnesota Cities in your topic. And they usually have primers or background information about topics, they do a really nice job.
Thanks, I appreciate it, like I said, got a little homework to do.
The city consultant in the back of the city liquor store.
Yep.
Can have a calendar back there.
Yep, I heard today from one of my colleagues who's working in another city and they have a municipal liquor store like you do, but they said the city administrator was thinking, mm, it's a lot of work. So we'll have to rely on.
Paperwork and doing the.
Just like all the rules and all the things you have to do, so I don't know, if that's true for Mound, it's a smaller city, so it might be more. But it'll be interesting to see how this evolves over the next three to six months, everything kind of has to be in place.
Okay, we have further information or further discussion on this?
No.
It's coming back in July.
Yeah, July, in our second, our July 2nd meeting, it'll be on your agenda.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to signage.
Did Commissioner Young have a question?
Yeah, this is just recreational, it's not medicinal.
Medicinal, medicinal is in here, but it's slightly different in times of the, the rules and so that's why you can see on this list, there's all the cannabis stuff, then there's the lower potency hemp, which some of that has already been allowed for a while. And then there's the medicinal, so that's why there's different classes and each one has their different rules and not something I'm an expert on telling you what the different rules are for the different elements.
Well, that's a good point, you bring up a good point because medicinal marijuana has been very highly regulated. And I don't know, how does it fold into this?
Yes, and in July, we're going to have a zoning code and we'll have more information.
Big samples here will be all.
That part I can't do.
Rita.
Yes, sir.
Do our like tents at Spirit of the Lakes or food trucks encompassed in any of the bullet points here?
So it's really interesting in, yeah, not exactly, but there is a part of the rule and I, just a second, I was going to get the exact wording. And this is from the league. Where was that? The new law authorizes temporary cannabis events lasting no more than four days. Applicants must obtain any necessary permits or licenses issued by the local unit of government. Cities may not prohibit cannabis events, but they may set standards to which the event must adhere. And cities may also permit onsite consumption for events but are not required to. So it is something that the city.
Is that like a cannabis festival?
Yeah.
That's part of what the city is going to have to wrestle with.
Okay.
Now, the city attorney will kind of be leading that conversation, I'm not sure if all of that's getting decided in July. Or if we're trying to address the one part that is starting early and then we'll work towards the other. That's one of the things that we'll have more information about is we try and figure out what needs to be done by when so that everything's in place and time before the rules are in play. Because other than the social equity applicants, everything else is January 1st, 2025. So there's only one part of it that's early, but that one part of it does affect you because that would be more about zoning.
Yeah, and we don't have anything today.
Correct.
So, starting fresh, okay.
Okay, any, any other comments or questions regarding cannabis? Signage.
Signage, so signage is something that you hear about, I think, as we do development applications, but you don't spend as much time in. Part of the reason is it's in chapter 119 and not in chapter 129 in zoning. However, signage does refer to our zoning districts and so it is old, it predates all of the changes that we've made, including even the existence of the mixed use districts. It still references the PED district for those that have been around for a long time, the destination district, the linear district. So we need to update it because it references our current zoning districts. Also, there was a Supreme Court case, Reed versus the town of Gilbert. And that rule said that cities cannot regulate the content of a sign, meaning I, if I have to read said sign to say whether or not you're allowed and how big it should be, that's not allowed. So that is a big change and will, it will probably be more challenging for Sarah and administration than you all. Because it's a big change in terms of how the code currently reads is we have regulations for garage sale signs, for real, real estate signs, for political signs. We have signage rules that are based on how, what the purpose of the sign and that all has to go away and we have to make it much simpler. But it also makes it more complicated because we all probably agree that garage sale signs are fine, but we don't really want just any old sign sitting out there on a regular basis, but we no longer can make that distinction. Hopefully that makes sense. So we can regulate signs based on the type, meaning is it a temporary sign, is it a permanent sign? We can regulate based on size, height, we can regulate the placement of it and some design features like motion, illumination. We can regulate it different between the different zoning districts, but again, we can't regulate it based on, you know, we like your business, we don't like that person's business, it all has to be the same.
You can't regulate what it says.
Cannot regulate, basically, yes, our general mantra to ourselves is if I have to read the sign to know how to tell you where it can go, then that's not allowed. Now, there are some exceptions which I'll talk about here because I'm going to break that rule almost immediately. Before we get into it, we just wanted to cover, these are the different types of signs that we'll be talking about. Pylon signs, window signs, wall signs, property identification signs, so ones that have numbers. Projecting signs, awning signs, banner signs, ground banner signs, you can see there's a ton of types of signs. Some of these you have, some of these you don't have, so some of these we may not actually include in the code, some of them we not. So like the ground banner sign, that's kind of a newish type of sign, the code currently doesn't really talk about that. So that's something that we may add into the code to tie, to try and address that. So that's the one that are like the fabric ones that get stuck in the ground. Instead of the banner signs, we don't really see as many banner signs anymore, we see these fabric flag type signs, those are more common. So those are all the kinds of signs that we're going to have to talk about. Those are the terminologies, we can include the pictures, so you'll have this next time as well. But we have these to try and help illuminate, or explain what the different types of sign is. Did you have a question, I almost looked like you had a question, no? Okay.
You answered it, all right.
Oh, okay. So we can have prohibited signs, exempt signs, and I'm going to talk through those just as a foundation. So again, similar to cannabis, this is, we don't deal with signage a lot, usually you approve the project and then later on, Sarah and I review the signage and approve the signage. the signage. On occasion, when you see a development, we might mention the fact they're gonna have a monument sign, they're gonna have a projection sign, but again, you're not deep into it, but we're gonna be making changes, so we would like to use you as the sounding board to try and say, does this make sense? What are the questions? And there are gonna be some decisions that have to be made because of the fact that we can't do things how we have. Um, it gets to be a little bit funny on trying to regulate certain signs. Um, and things have changed, modernized, window signs are definitely different than they used to be before, you know, now the decals are really easy to get on and off, so there are conversations we've had in other cities about all of those new kind of ways that you can do signage, and what do you think is appropriate, not appropriate. Um, so prohibited signs, typical ones that we do, I, this is actually reflecting of what's in the code mostly, with some additions, so off-premise signs or billboards. Um, you can actually regulate off-premise signs, so that means off-premise, meaning something that's promoting something that, that use of that parcel is not on that parcel, so if you're doing a billboard, you're promoting something for some other business, you don't really have those in town because you've been-
We don't allow it.
You don't allow it, and you can continue not allow it, there's actually a separate court case about those signs, and it still says we can continue to do that. Motion signs, meaning signs that move, you don't allow those. Um, signs painted on the roof, walls, or other surfaces, kind of, you know, the not-looking-nice signs, those kind of things. That being said, if we do allow murals, murals are a whole different thing, and there's a whole section we can put if we actually wanna have that conversation, uh, because murals are not signs, they're two separate things. Um, because you can't regulate the content of a sign, so you have to be careful, because if you wanna allow murals, you do wanna regulate the content of a mural, so there is a way around it.
So, a mural is not a sign?
If we wanna regulate the content of what a mural looks like, we have to make it not a sign, and there is a way around doing it. Right now, you just, I would say you don't allow them. It hasn't come up. I don't think we have any.
We used to have one, we don't have one anymore.
Um, Tom, Fluke, you know it, you know, the whole building was kind of a mural.
So, if we wanna have that, we have written provisions for murals, currently don't have it. Um, things that obstruct egress or impede traffic, roof or portable signs, there are some provisions that allow them on a limited basis, but otherwise, they're prohibited. Um, exempt signs, so that's another class of signage, those are things that don't require permits or fees. So, property identification signs, which are very specifically identified, is things that have the numbers, you know, your numbers for your building, that's a property identification sign. You can do warning or restrictive signs, like no trespassing, that is allowed because it's a safety element, so that's the one time you can have a content-based sign, is for things like stop, no trespassing, those kinds of things. Um, signs put up by a governmental unit, um, signs on the interior building that can't be seen outside, uh, we just put that in there, so there's clarity that we're not gonna regulate those. Uh, right now, I believe the code says window signs not exceeding 50%, I don't think we add that.
That's in the code.
So, that one works, except for we have found in doing our work that we've needed to be a little bit more specific, given decals and branding, and so I will bring that in as part of the conversation, if that makes sense. Like, sometimes nowadays, you don't just do, you know, whatever, the local pizza shop, it's like the pizza shop plus all the branding that's all the way around the buil- building, is that the sign? So, we have to just clarify that. Um, and then exempt temporary signs, meaning a sign that we don't require regulations about, but is not intended to be there all the time. Um, properties with an open building permit or something that's for sale or rent, that's covering real estate signs without saying real estate signs. Uh, signs for garage sales, open houses, um, sandwich board signs, portable signs. So, these are all things that we have to address, it's amazing how much there is for signage, which is why Sarah and I have been avoiding it, um, but we need to talk about it. Permanent versus temporary, so things that are done there permanently, temporary signs, how long can temporary signs be there? Do they need a permit? So, some signs we wouldn't require a permit for, some you might require a permit for, um, digital displays, murals, enforcement and permitting, and then sign calculations. I was hoping to work with Sarah on putting some graphics that explain how to calculate a sign, because I know on a few of the shopping centers, there's been kind of questions about how we calculate, is this included, is this not included, so sometimes the graphics can help to make it a little bit clearer about, is it just the sign face, is it the part in between the sign? It's amazing how very specific it needs to be. Um, so that's what's coming for signage. Probably, not, not probably, you will get a finished sign code, you will not see track changes because of the nature of all the changes we need to make. It'll just be a straightforward, here's what's proposed, because there's a lot of moving around that has to happen, there's a lot of terminology that goes away when we have to make it content neutral. Um, so, that one-
So, that'll be a repeal and replace, rather than strike out, underline, and then we'll go through substantively what's changed.
And this one does not have a timeframe, so the reason we're bringing it up today is because we have the time today to do the introduction. We will make it fit in when it makes sense to fit in, cannabis will have priority, and then signage will come after, but it is important for us to do it, because right now, we're working off of a sign code that references districts that don't exist, and it's not been the easiest to administer as we work through with folks. It's not impossible, but it would be easier if we could clean it up and have a complete sign code that folks can use and reference.
Okay, further questions for Rita about signage?
They're stunned, like, glazed over eyes, which is okay.
Thank you for another topic for me to learn about.
Yes.
I never realized how little I actually pay attention to or, or know of signage until you just showed me two screens that had more sign types than I think I've ever seen in my life, so.
Yes.
More homework, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll pay attention to signs as I'm driving around. Get a feel for it.
It is one of those things that is amazing how much it is in our environment, but we don't pay attention to it. That's the one thing about planning and zoning, right? Like, now that you have this awareness, you drive every place and you start to look at things and go, how did they do that? How did they do that? How come that property is so, I mean, you can't stop once you start.
Okay, moving on. City council report, Kath, anything?
I have a couple of things. Um, you know, we started our city council meeting starting at six o'clock last week, and we had a full house, so word is out, and it worked out great.
We did have a full house.
Yeah, we did.
We were done at, what, the left or eights?
Yeah, so it was really nice for, you know, on the council, we don't have a lot of full-timers that may be challenged with that time, so it worked out really great for, for us. Excuse me, um, Minnesota Lakes Bank Annual Shred Days is Thursday, June 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00. And although it's free, they do gracious, graciously accept donations for the Minnesota Lakes Bank Scholarship Fund.
What's the date again?
That's June 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00.
Shredding?
So, like shredding paper?
Shredding.
They're doing shredding.
Document shredding.
Shred many things.
Yeah.
Paper, hard drives?
Uh-huh. I'm not sure about hard drives, but paper.
So, you could make a donation.
You, they encourage donations.
Okay.
Yes. Music in the Park starts at Surfside next Thursday, also at the 13th, with Chris Kelly. Um, the other performances will be Thursday, July 11th, with Panhandler's Street Drum Band, and Thursday, August 8th, Pandora's Other Box.
Cute.
Yeah, they're good, too. Um, Sarah, you might have a little more info on this, but at our meeting last week, Jesse did indicate that they have hired a new public works, um, director, and, um, they seem really happy with the selection. I think they were gonna start in the next week or two, is that correct?
Um, I've not heard, yet.
Okay. I think Jesse said in the next week or two that person will be starting.
I think it's a week or two.
Yeah. And then, um, we have some upcoming, uh, workshops prior to council meetings on June 11th. It's the Just Deeds Racial Covenants, um, workshop, we have somebody coming in, apparently we have maybe 300 homes that still have some of those archaic covenants on them, and somebody's gonna talk about releasing those covenants off the houses.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
What is wrong with me tonight? I feel fine on everything.
Rita, you probably know a lot about this.
Yes.
Do you wanna describe it? You might be a little more accurate than me.
I don't know. I haven't had to talk about it in a while.
I know, but it's suddenly come up, so.
Okay. Um, so, historically, racial covenants were created after the time that it was determined to be illegal that cities could racially segregate using zoning. So, at, at, in an earlier time, it was easy to use zoning and different components of zoning to make sure you got people in the right places. At a certain point in our history, it was determined illegal, so what developers did in order to protect themselves is that they actually put racial covenants in the deed restrictions, and so it said you cannot sell this house to whatever group it was, Jewish, black, pick your group, it only can be sold to white people, there's different ones in different ways. It's very, um, so there's been a project in the Twin Cities to identify where these are and to start seeing about removing them, so that they aren't-
So, it's just cleaning up language.
It's cleaning a language in the deed, and it does take action in order to do that. Um, I wasn't aware that it came all the way out here, I'm not surprised, but there's been a group that's really been working on that, um, probably where I first heard about it and thought about it was really in Minneapolis. I mean, if you look, um, while you guys talk, I might be able to, that, that's when they use the term redlining.
Yeah, I was gonna say redlining.
Um, that's kind of what that is, and there are maps, and I might be able to get it while you guys talk, um, to show you exactly kind of what that looks like for Minneapolis, because there's a group that maps them. I've seen presentations in Duluth, there's actually a really cute little YouTube video about what redlining is, um, that explains kind of what they were and what they were about, and so, that's-
Well, there's somebody at the high school who's been talking about this for years, and this is old, I mean, from the 1800s.
I think it's the early 1900s.
Maybe 1900s, so, they've been around for a long time. Um, and apparently, there's gonna be somebody coming to the council workshop who are one of the teams that work on identifying these, and I think we had over 300 properties that still, they're hidden, most people don't know anything about them.
They had that language?
Mm-hmm.
I keep thinking that's crazy to me.
Yeah.
That there'd be that many.
Well, it was a long time ago.
Is that workshop open to the public, or is it just the council?
Uh, I think, you know what, that's a good question, I'll have to check for you, but usually, they're open to the public.
I just think it's interesting, and if it was something that was open, I might attend, because I, again, I, I got a lot of homework to do after tonight, but why not just add a third topic?
Right. Um, and then June 18th, or it's, uh, we've got a Ayler's, Eller's Financial Management Plan presentation, some other finds they've come up with for, you know, how we can maybe do some franchise, franchise deed adjustments, things like that. We've talked about this for a long time. And then June 25th, we're going to be discussing possibly finding if there's a reason to replace Arnold Police coverage with Minatrista, that's just on a conversation block, so we'll be talking about that. And that's all I've got tonight.
If you want, I can show you that.
When is Surfside Park, the new park, gonna be done?
Well, when it stops raining. I mean, you know, it's gonna go pretty fast once it stops raining.
I just had a lot of people ask me about it, I'm like, I don't know.
Well, they've been held, probably not.
Yeah.
But, you know, they, that's what they do for their life, is putting up playground equipment, so that'll go quick, but it's been tough weather.
Well, some people are like, is it gonna be done by Spirit of the Lakes? I'm like, I assume so.
Well, that was the plan.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough.
Mother Nature and other things.
Thank you, Kathy.
If you would like, I can show you at least, um, an example from Minneapolis. Oh, there's actually a-
I know why Sarah just got done going through the covenants, and I think Excelsior too, so.
Okay.
Oh, I can do it if you want, I just didn't want to do it though, so, I'm actually getting a map going on my other screen. Um, so this is an example of the wording, so this one says, you can't, uh, you can't transfer to anybody of Chinese, Japanese, Moorish, Turkish, Negro, Mongolian, or African blood or descent, these are restricted. And what happened was eventually the FHA went home binding, they actually created these maps, and if you had a racial covenant, then it was shown as a better area, and it was used by the federal government to help with funding for loans, because they were considered not as secure. Um, and so, these are very common to have back in the 1930s, where they have these maps, and it would show areas, like, I think this one probably in blue is showing where the racial covenants are more in play, and that's where the white population was living, and then you can see the different areas, and the redder that it is, the more undesirable the location is, and they tried to keep people segregated into those areas. Um, and then there's a group called Mapping Prejudice U of U M E D U, um, and this is a map, the timeline is working, where it shows the racial covenants and as they're , um, come online. So, that's showing all the racial covenants that they found, I believe it's all the ones that come so far into the cities, so you can-
So, these are all now illegal, correct?
Having a racial covenant?
Yep.
Well, technically, it's illegal to do this, however, these are already on deeds, so you, you actually still need to take them off, technically, which is why there's all these initiatives to try and take them off, is they are part of the deed. So, technically, you could say they're not enforceable, but I, you know, the safest thing is to take them off so that it's not a concern. Um, but you can read more about it on that type of, uh, so it's been in around, the original website I had was from 2020, um, so it's definitely been something that's been talked about, and as they, it just takes time to pull all the deeds out and see who has it and figure those things out.
Samantha, on Thursday of this week, they'll be posting for the workshop in the city council meeting, and so you can look.
I'll take a look.
Usually, they're public, so.
They all are public, uh, but sometimes you meet in there when they're smaller, and maybe you'll meet in here. You know, you can check with Jesse.
I will.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Sarah, anything from you?
Um, I, I reiterate, Ms. McInady, uh, talked about Music in the Park, that's starting a week from Thursday at Surfside, hopefully it'll start raining pretty soon. Um, uh, as we talked about earlier, the July 2nd meeting, uh, is the meeting where we, that we will have the, uh, cannabis hearing, we'll also have anticipated a couple of land use applications that are, uh, determining if they're complete, so we could have a couple of projects as well. Uh, Spirit of the Lakes is upcoming next month, uh, July 18th through the 20th. Uh, the farmers market started in Mound on the 25th of May, um, and we just got the application today for Carp Fest, uh, that'll be out next, uh, Tuesday's-
It's against carp, just to be clear.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, a music, uh, concert fundraiser event for Harrison Bay Association, and it's being held on Saturday, June 15th, um, and I, they have a website, uh, and they have a Facebook page, but they'll get their permit, uh, on the council's agenda for consideration next Tuesday. Um, that's all I have, we're, we're actively busy. I, I feel like I'm swimming under the water, but we're doing the best we can.
So I saw that Serenity Hill is coming back up now again, the Halsted?
Yes, the council had an introduction at their last meeting, um, of a proposed, uh, project in Mound for the mo- the mound piece, as well as, uh, a companion project in the city of Minatrista. Um, the council introduction, uh, was, is basically kind of a sketch plan where, uh, the public that, uh, live within 350 feet, and the council can hear about a concept before applications are filed. Um, you, I encourage you, watch, watch the YouTube. Was it two meetings ago?
Well, because Carl was last week.
Oh, yes.
It was two meetings ago.
So does the mound component of it come here?
The, to the planning commission?
Yeah.
No, it, it's a council.
No, no. When they actually propose the project, yes, you will see it.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking, whether you're gonna see the flats.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
You will see the flat when it comes through.
Did it, it sounded like they said the Minatrista side was already approved by the council on Minatrista?
They, they also did a concept plan or a sketch plan, um, at the planning commission.
I think they went to both planning commission and council.
And council, and they may have gone to parks, too, in Minatrista.
I think they operate differently. So theirs might have been a concept sketch plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they, they don't have approvals. They, it was basically an informal review by the Trista side, as, which was done before they came to the mound side.
Oh.
The council had concerns that the Minatrista side was all single family, and then all of a sudden, you get to mound and it's all row houses.
Yep.
You know, so hopefully, they're gonna be going back to the drawing board before they, before it shows up here.
Yeah, and they also, they, they also had a side by, a couple side by sides, or several side by sides in the Trista. Um, the thought was, they wanted, some of the council members thought that it would be nice to, to see similar dynamics and intermixing, you know, you know, look at perhaps, um, some side by sides and some.
Yeah.
Some, uh, single families as well. And then there was the, the talk about the driveway road down to the hill because of the grade, to take another look at that. Um, but they, but they, they took those comments and they're evaluating what they heard.
So mound has approval authority of the component of it in mound, correct?
Only on the mound side, yes. Yes. Mounds is mound.
Just, just like the.
Yes.
The plan that never came off, that we.
Right, Serenity.
Have a lot of time looking at here.
Yes, yep. So, the Serenity project, we had, the mound had the 10-unit building and had a accessory building, and then the Minatrista had a companion project that I think had six or seven, 10-unit buildings. So, similar, but each in their own cities.
Okay, anything else from you?
Do you want to initiate a host for us, maybe, because that would be, um.
Oh, go ahead.
The rung project.
Yes, yes.
Oh, me?
Oh, I, oh, yeah, yeah.
It was a council introduction, so.
Yeah, we, we also had another council introduction, um, at the last council meeting, uh, for a proposed, um, project involving parcels along the west side of Lost Lake. That would be three, four-unit buildings, um, along the east side of Commerce. Uh, and that concept was proposed by Jim Gouli and Carl Runk. Uh, in addition, uh, the, the proposed flats would also have companion, uh, docks, uh, shared with the apartment complex a little bit further down, uh, towards downtown, that would be accessed via a boardwalk in and around the wetlands, as well.
So what parcels are there now that you're talking about getting rid of?
We call it the fallness property. I think it's 2400 and 2420 Commerce Boulevard.
It's right across from OLL, you know.
That, that building that's been under construction?
OLL, Our Lady of the Lake. And then, on part of the property, they have a little gray, looks like a shed.
Yeah.
Garage type thing.
It's not, it's not the building, building, that's been trying to be.
Remodeled?
No, it's the next one down.
Oh.
If you're facing it to the right.
Correct. It's a, it's basically, it feels like a, it, there's just basically a shed on the property. It doesn't feel, it just feels open.
So is that proposal gonna come here?
When the, if, a- applications would come to the planning commission for land use, uh, as well as subdivision, and that would be a PUD, so it'll be a PUD, uh, with a subdivision, so a public hearing here, and a public hearing at the council as well, in addition to other, uh, related activities as well.
And then the library is coming in, has come in, so that will be something that we see in the next.
Yeah, the library application came in, it's under review, um, so we anticipate that could come as early as July.
Is that replacement on the same property?
Yes, yes.
Same place, okay.
Yeah, same site, same site, new, uh, new, new building and site plan.
And it's really beautiful. They've done a great job.
And they have a website, too.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the.
They've been working really hard with the community to get feedback, you know, for the last year, and it's really gonna be nice.
Yes.
Okay, anything else, Sarah?
That is all I have.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, dates, yes, thank you, I'm sorry. Um, uh, just as a reminder, the July, July 2nd meeting, remember that that is a couple days before the 4th of July. Is there anybody that knows that they're not going to be available? Because we are gonna have a very, potentially a full agenda.
Okay, then in August, we don't have the first Tuesday.
Right.
We have August 20.
Yes, because that was changed earlier in the year for night to unite.
Calendars are adjusted accordingly.
Yeah, yeah, that was changed earlier this year.
Okay.
And just quickly, Sarah, if you could remember to send us that cannabis, just so we can do a little research.
I wrote down.
Thank you, Rita.
Yeah, yeah, and if there's other info that's helpful, send that as well.
Thanks.
I'm, I'm sorry?
She's making fun of me.
I said, for those of us who are behind the curve, cannabis topic.
That was hot off the, that was basically.
I think that came in the time we were working on the package.
Literally, I think Wednesday or Thursday was when that, we got noticed that, about when that date was and where we needed to be, so, um, we reacted as quick as we could. But, um, but yes, but no, that's everything, Chair.
Okay, anything else to be brought before the commission?